RG5.
Very good.
Cord's going.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the June 6th DeSoto City Council meeting to order. We'll start with roll call, please.
Lane.
Here.
Daniels.
Here.
Hunter Michael.
Here.
Murdock.
Here.
Ritter is absent.
Okay, I would invite you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
That was strange. Oh, we didn't stop buffering. I was just checking to make sure it was working. Sorry about that.
Was that mine?
It was me. I'm sorry, I apologize.
We're live streaming our live meeting here so we know what's going on. All right, our first item tonight is our consent agenda. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have approval of the minutes of our council meeting of May 16th, approval of pay ordinance 855, approved permit from Wald Company for the city's 4th of July fireworks display, and approve a parade permit for the DeSoto High School homecoming parade. Any discussion or questions about the consent agenda? If not, a motion, please.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Murdock.
Yes.
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Our next item tonight is call to public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that are discussed under call to public may or may not be acted on by the council during this meeting. There is a four-minute time limit. Anyone wish to address the council on an item other than what's on the agenda? Linda Lane, please step to the podium.
The recent Lynnwood tornado was a little too close for comfort for all of us, and it brought a very important issue to light, and that's the safety in our community. When the storm sirens went off to take cover, we had barely begun our planning commission meeting, and we all retreated to the basement. And there were approximately 20 to 40 additional people who streamed into, childrens, adults, senior citizens, and even some pets. And everyone had the same concerned look on their face. Some were fearful, but all were grateful to have a place to go. And to get out of the storm. And it's fortunately that we were having a planning commission meeting, or our building would not have been open to the public. One lady said she ran over to her neighbors and knocked on the door, but no one was home, so she took a chance and came here. She had no one else to go, nowhere else to go like the rest of the people that were here. While we were in the basement, people were getting information on their cell phones or their laptops, whatever they might have. The neighboring communities had been all but wiped out. Everyone was scared, and stories, some true, some not, were going around of what had happened. People were texting their loved ones to let them know they were safe in the basement, and I was very thankful for the fact that we did have a safe place for them to go to. And that's also when I found out that had we not been having a planning commission meeting, it would not be open. There would be no place for these people to go. So with that information, I'd like to ask the council to consider making arrangements to have the building open to the public when the storm sirens are sounded. This information could also be listed on our website, posted on different Facebook places, and advertised in Discovering DeSoto as well. And it's my understanding that the fire department used to do this a long time ago, but for whatever reason, it's no longer going on. And my feelings are that we need to have an emergency plan in place before disaster hits. No one should be faced with not having a safe place to go during times like this, and if we could even save one life, it would be worth whatever steps need to be taken to make our community a safer place. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Linda. Mike and I had this conversation Wednesday morning, and I think we're gonna, taking steps to re-initiate that program, conversations with the fire department so that someone will be available. Can you update us on?
Yeah, well, nothing really to update since Wednesday morning, but I agree with just the general policy, the desire to provide this as a safe place. My understanding of why the policy changed, when we first moved in, we would open, open the building during storms. A member of the fire department would come down, if it wasn't during city hall hours, would come down and open the building and let folks in. We stopped that, I think, under the concern that if the fire department then got called away while there were people in the building, if they got called away on a call, then we'd have just members of the public here unsupervised or no way to really secure the building or anybody in charge. I think that's, one, either a situation we can figure out a way through, or, two, maybe it's a risk worth taking. You know, because these, if you were here, these people that were here, were not here to cause trouble.
No.
They weren't here to look for an opportunity to steal something. They were here because they were scared. So it left the same impression on me that it did on you that night.
Good.
So I think it's certainly something we can, we can find solutions to. So I want to talk with the fire department, with the police, with sheriff's department, with Jay Garvin and just staff here to find out some reasonable way to implement that quickly, because we're still in seasons.
Unfortunately, yes. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else on call to public tonight? Daryl, come on up.
Daryl Zimmerman, 34055 West 86 Terrace, DeSoto, Kansas. I have several questions and several comments, and I think I can get through with this in four minutes, and then you won't have to listen to me anymore. My first question is, why is a public subsidy being considered when a development would occur without a subsidy when the time was right? My comment is, the mantra that "build it and they'll come" rarely works except to shift already existing demand from one location to another, and the term for it is cannibalization. Another comment, I recall 35, maybe 50 years ago, when the property that's now being considered for a TIF was farmland and was sold to a developer to build a project that failed to happen, it was going to be a mobile home park, and not, and there's been very little farming done on it since then. And until the same concept, similar, was when the tax abatement was given for the apartment complex. Somebody said, "Well, which would you rather have?" I don't know that I would really like to have either. My question is, who will reap the greatest benefit if this TIF is adopted? My comment is that many states and cities have reduced their use of TIF. The city of Chicago, and as I understand it, the state of California has just practically done away with it. They've used it so much, and it just was cavalier in how they doled it out. And I do want to compliment all those parties that, I read through some of the documentation on this, and it's very lengthy and very detailed, but I think there's been a lot of work spent on it. But when, the problem is that when a group wants the intended consequences of an action, they purposely choose to ignore any negative unintended consequences. A question I have is when specific changes had to be made, when the TIF was, it was altered to make it more palatable for the cost-benefit analysis to arrive at a positive report, what were some of those changes that had to be made? Because I understand the initial comment that the analysis made was not completely positive, or positive at all. And why, why, I guess my real comment about the whole thing is, why are people moving, were people moving to DeSoto 15 or 20 years ago? A written survey of respondents to a question I asked, that same question 30 or more years ago, or 20, 15, 20 years ago, was, the 30 people that I asked gave very similar answers, because I was the person that did the survey. They said that they moved here because it was a rural, open environment. And secondly, the people were friendly. Third, they knew their neighbors and communicated with them. And four, they had an outstanding school system, and they felt safe, and people helped each other out. And that was our small-town values. We even had a sign that said that. And this, I believe, many of the financially well-off do not understand what the words "too much" means. They only understand the word "more." I personally believe that there is greed in this, my hometown, and I wish it wasn't that way. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Daryl. Anyone else under call to public? Seeing none, we will move on. Our next item is a public hearing for the TIF project plan for Hike Properties LLC. Patrick, were you going to introduce that, or?
Yes. By statute, council, we did notice this item up for public hearing, so at a minimum, we need to open the public hearing. We did receive a request today from the applicant to keep the public hearing open through the next meeting and postpone any votes until a full council can be here. Councilman Ritter, obviously, is not here. He's in Europe. I did reach out to Kevin via email to see if he wanted to participate by phone, but due to the time difference, he's not able to do that. But because we noticed it up for a public hearing...
We need to open the public hearing then, and then...
Need to open the public hearing, and then also, if everybody is good with, you know, keeping the public hearing open, we'll just need to announce that that will be done at the June, I think it's the June 20th meeting.
So at the start of the June 20th meeting, would our meeting then start in public hearing after roll call and Pledge of Allegiance down, essentially?
Yep.
So we just make that announcement that, okay? So I guess right now, we need to poll the council to see if there is a desire to table them, or continue the, open the public hearing and keep it open and table the item. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And thought, too, it may be good after you open the public hearing to ask if there's anybody here that can't make the next meeting.
To be able to give their comment, right.
We would go ahead and take their comments.
We can, yeah, we can do comment and comment. Okay. Does anybody object to not taking, starting the public hearing tonight but not closing and taking the vote at the next meeting when we have a full body? Assuming we would have a full body at our next meeting?
I'm not objecting. I think I missed the first part. So was it the applicant that's requesting it?
Yeah.
Okay.
This letter, I put a copy of the letter on your desk, from Matt Goff, who's here.
Well, I'm guessing, seeing none, then I guess our next step would be then to open the public hearing then and take comment from anyone who wished to comment tonight? And then we would cease taking testimony and then move to table the item, or I don't know, what sort of?
Just recess back into the regular meeting.
Okay.
But with the understanding that the public hearing will reopen that at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open, officially open the public hearing on the TIF for Hike Properties. Anyone wish to comment on this matter tonight? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
My only comment, my name is John Stepnowski, 8508 Valley, Spring Drive. Is, the letter came to ask for, leave it open till next, the next meeting. Is there a concern that with only four board members here, that this TIF won't go through?
Well, the vote that would be taken is a two-thirds of the council members. So someone being absent does affect, could affect the vote, given that, you know, if it was just two-thirds of who's here, then, you know...
So there, it is a concern, because somebody's not here, that it might not go through? Is that the question?
Right, I think, I think that's the applicant's concern.
Yeah, I was just clarification. I'm not concerned about it, but I just wanted to make sure I understood that was the reason. Now, in a case, does the mayor get the vote if, at all on this? No matter, even, okay?
No, just the council.
Well, that was my question. I just want clarification, because I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Did you get his name and address, Patrick?
John Stepnowski, 8508 Valley, Spring Drive.
Thank you.
I thought, I thought he was a little behind you.
It's like Jones, but a little different.
Yeah. Anyone else wish to? Joe, please come up.
Joe Roy, 17123 158 Street, Baser, Kansas, 66007. I think you all know that I've talked to most of you, and that I am 100% against this. I was 100% for the TIF, or the, what happened on the grocery store, because everybody in town needed it, okay? I was 100% against the apartment deal. Now, it's the third time that we're asking again. As a guy that is heavily invested in DeSoto, Kansas, I don't feel like this is going to benefit DeSoto today. Maybe it's going to benefit when the time is right. I think we're pushing the time in order for this to happen. You know, I look at, at, he wants $2 million, okay, in tax. So I'm looking at, at that, and I'm sure you guys have too. I hope you have, anyway. If I can find it here. Anyway, I see $750,000 out of this $2 million. Some of it's for interest, some of it's for engineering, some of it's just a $200,000, you know, fund, slush fund. There's $260,000 worth of land. So I went and talked to Travis, face to face, because, and I told him that I was not a fan. I've got, I've been in DeSoto trying to do developments and everything here, and it's hard, you know, to do this stuff. I pay $65,000 a year in taxes on my stuff. $65,000. He wants a 10-year tax abatement, or the TIF, you know? The 80% of my stuff would be $523,000, and I know his is going to be a heck of a lot more. So what I'm concerned about is the little guys in DeSoto, Kansas. You know, it does affect me, and it affects the people that rent from me. And, you know, they can say that there's a Burger King and everything. What's the staple of every small town? The staple of every small town is a Sonic and a Taco Bell, and they didn't make it here, okay? You know, so I'm not saying anything about Burger King, but I think we need to think about this. You know, if a Burger King comes and it takes away the business from other people, what are we gaining? We're not gaining anything. If one new one comes in and one, somebody else goes out, what have we gained? We haven't gained anything. So I just, you know, I think it's going to hurt businesses. I think it's going to hurt the little guy that took a chance on DeSoto, Kansas. And I just, you know, I just can't support it. I don't see how that DeSoto can support it. And like I said, I'm just an old construction worker, and I'm not as smart as the bankers and the lawyers and all them kind of stuff, but, you know, I've never got a handout on anything that I've ever done. I've paid the full boat on everything that I've done in town. The one time that I did ask, they told me if I couldn't afford it, then don't build it. Remember those, that time? So that's my point, is that I asked one time, and there's a few people in this room that was on that, on that, when it, you know what? Joe, if you can't afford to build it, then we don't care really whether you come and build it or not. And if you can't afford it, then don't build it. Well, you know what, Travis? I hate, you know, that's why I got a burr, okay? Has nothing to do with you personally, but, you know what? I've always paid my own way. I've always done it. Is it going to benefit DeSoto? I'm not sure. I'm not 100% sure it's going to. Someday, that will develop when it's time, and the city won't have to give $2 million. And that's, you know, that's my, my story, and I think that we need to think long and hard. I mean, there's another apartment complex supposedly wants to come. He didn't ask for nothing. Didn't ask for a thing. It'll probably never happen, but I just want, as a guy that is looking for the little guys in town, I felt like I had to come up here and at least say, "What about the little guys in DeSoto, Kansas, that put everything that they own into DeSoto without asking for anything?" And that's all I have.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight? All right. Well, seeing none, then we will suspend comment, recess back to the regular session. Keep in mind, we'll open the public hearing again, so there will be an opportunity for comment again at the beginning of our next meeting.
Mayor, I will not be here for the next meeting. I'm in Indianapolis, and I don't know if I will be able to join electronically.
We would need a motion to table the discussion on the TIF.
Right, we're, we're past the public hearing now, so now we're at the regular agenda. So our first item on old, new business would be, consider the...
Maybe what we could consider doing, on the, on the chance that you may be able to participate by phone, go ahead and table that till the June 20th meeting. If we need to do this again, we could do that again at that time.
Okay.
If you can't participate by phone, if the applicant wants to move forward at that time, we don't know what will happen between now and then. That'd be my suggestion.
And just quick confirmation, the first meeting in July is going to be on the Wednesday the 3rd, not the 4th? Is that correct?
We need to talk about that.
We did, we did discuss it. We did not officially make a motion to move the meeting, as I recall. And part of my asking was if he wasn't able to call in, then where it would fall next?
And I'm in Louisville on the 3rd. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So you need a motion to table it till the June 20th? Yeah, so we would, a motion to table item A until June 20th? Pending a full participation of council?
I'll do what I can to participate, but I can't say at this point.
Okay. So make a motion that we table it, or continue it till June 20th, pending the participation? Okay, we have a motion, a second?
Second.
Oh, second by Councilman Lane. Any discussion or questions regarding the motion? Not roll call, please?
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Number 4Bs, consider final platform Commerce Park, then I assume we would table this item then as well?
Yes, Mayor, this is Matt Goff at Barbara Emerson. The letter I sent this morning contained a request to defer both 4A and 4B.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to table this item? I'll make, I'll make the same motion for 4B. Or, is it 4B? Yes, 4B.
Same.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any questions? If not, roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. For C, approved 2019, B bond ordinance 2468.
Yes, council, this actually relates to both items 4C and 4D. You'll remember, this is the funding for our, the purchase of our new Public Works facility building on Lexington Avenue. We had a couple of previous actions the council took to make possible the pricing of this bond issue today, which we elected to go with a negotiated pricing through Commerce Bank. Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore Bell and Jim Pritchard with Columbia Capital are here this evening to fill you in on the transaction that happened today. If there's any technical information that you, any questions you have that I can't answer, they're here and available. The sale, essentially, it went very favorably for us today. I learned on a call on Tuesday that the bond market for, essentially for very safe bonds like municipal markets since April has been trending very favorably toward lower interest rates for us, and in fact, that played out today. The all-in true interest cost on this bond issue, a 20-year level debt payment is 3.35%, which is slightly better than the GO bond that we issued in April. It was 3.45, or 3.54%. So as a result, our yearly debt service payment, it'll fluctuate a little bit throughout the years, but it's going to average somewhere around $66,000 a year, which is less than the 73.5% that we had plugged into our capital improvement plan and to our debts, to our debt service payments going, going out. So I'll stop there. There are, I placed at your tables the updated bond resolution documents. They're quite volumous. These were also in your packets, but they had blanks in terms of the payment schedule and interest rates and things like that. So the ones in front of you tonight are, have been updated based on today's pricing. And if you have any questions for Kevin, Jim, or myself, we can try and answer them.
All right. Any questions from council? No? Okay. Hearing no questions, would someone want to make a motion then to approve the first ordinance, 2468?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2468, approving the bond package.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and likewise, we need a motion on the bond resolution?
1016.
Bond, or resolution 1016.
I'll make a motion. We authorize resolution 1016.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And just to wrap that item up, council, I did include in your packets the results of the Phase 1 environmental study that we had done on the property. It came back clean, which was a good report. Also, the property valuation, you remember the purchase agreement had a term in there that we were going to do a market rate property evaluation, and if that came in any lower, then we could back out. Value, valued the property at $950,000. And then lastly, our own building inspection department did a pretty thorough inspection of the property. Found a few things that recommending that we, we upgrade. The most significant one is the septic tank has essentially failed. There's holes in the septic tank, and it's leaking. We estimated the price of that, replacing that is before $5,000. There's some other recommendations that Steve Chick had relating to the garage door. In total, it's about $18,000 worth of estimated cost. So I transmitted that inspection report to the agent to ask that, my initial ask was for half of that to be taken off of the purchase price. Essentially, what we negotiated was a reduction in purchase price of $3,000, which is as close as we could get. So the purchase price is now... So the purchase price has now been reduced from $949 to $946,000. Whatever's left in the bond money could go straight back, correct me if I'm wrong, we could, straight back into the retiring the debt. Yeah.
Good.
So that's all good news. Ron Creason and the rest of the street department are just elated. They're thrilled to have a new facility on the horizon. Every, every time we make a small step toward it, Ron wants to celebrate, so it'll be, we'll have to have a ribbon cutting, or someone's gonna have to carry him over.
You keep promising ribbon cutting.
Yeah, we're still waiting on one of those from something else, I think.
No, the water, water treatment plant is still coming. And the, and the fiber. Okay. If that was it on that, I'd better stop now.
Okay. Item four E, consider cost proposals for city's annual Fourth of July fireworks display.
Yes, Council, this is from Wald. They've done our fireworks since, I think it's 2006. They've been doing it for quite a while. We've always been very happy with them. Last year, they warned us that because of supply chain issues, I think originating in China, that the prices would, would be going up this year. And so in the budget last year, we, we upped our budget for this, a couple, a couple thousand dollars. The proposal this year is $11,440. This will be the same show as the previous two years. So I asked for council's approval on that expenditure.
Any discussion of council, from council on the, I mean, I think the community really enjoys the fireworks display.
It's a great, it's a great show.
They do a great show.
I'll make a motion, we accept the proposal from Walden Company in the amount of $11,440.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Honna Michael.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Item four F, consider authorizing Kill Creek Road repairs.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Item four F is part of our ongoing maintenance program for 2019 project that was approved that we brought to you in March with recommendations for repairs was to fix all the transverse cracks on Kill Creek Road. Steph and I, and Ron Creason and I went out and marked 55 cracks. You have a picture of a typical crack that's out there on Kill Creek Road. We put out a bid for milling and repairing these cracks. We had two bidders, McAnany and Metro Asphalt. Metro Asphalt was the low bidder at $48,750. We've not done business with them previously, but have done some reference checking, and they do seem to have solid work experience out there. So I would recommend approving the contract price for $48,750 for repairs to Kill Creek Road. Now I'll stand for any questions.
So this is, and I, you've covered it. The, the chip seal will come later then after the cracks are fixed? This season, though, right?
Yes, that is correct. One thing I have to note is we're supposed to do our seal coat, this is a little bit of a sidebar, but because of all the rain, the seal coat, crack, chip seal guys, everybody's just backed up. So we haven't been able to move forward as quickly as we would have liked. Our seal coat project's been delayed a little bit because of that. And I'm certain that the chip seal stuff will be as well. We'll get it done.
All right. Any other questions from council for Brad on this item? If not, a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the contract with Metro Asphalt in the price of $48,750.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion of the motion? Not roll call, please.
Honna Michael.
Yes.
Murder. Murdock.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
All right. Item four G, consider final plat for Carriage Houses Phase Eight.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a ongoing process that you've had in front of you and the, and the Planning Commission as well. The Planning Commission has approved the preliminary development plan. This is planned, this is a step in that direction. They have to have their plat approved for construction to begin. They've brought this before us, actually several months ago. It's gone to the Planning Commission recently. It does conform with the preliminary development plan that has been approved by the Planning Commission. This is pretty straightforward against the eighth phase. There will be a phase nine and 10 before they run out of space on their existing location. I guess at this point, I would just ask that you recommend, we recommend that you approve the final plat for Carriage Houses Eight. Sorry, I'll stand for any questions. I didn't go through the full staff report. I mean, it's just pretty standard stuff, so if you have any questions, we'll certainly make ourselves available.
Any questions for Brad on this item? Sorry, Brad.
No, I'm good.
No? All right, motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the final plat for Carriage Houses Phase Eight.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? If not, roll call, please.
Mayor.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Honna Michael.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item five, executive session, no items tonight?
None this evening.
Item six, advisory report, city administrator.
Just want to remind you of our Summer Sunset Concert Series kicking off tomorrow evening. Matt Snook will be starting at seven. You got your t-shirts at your places? Hope to see you there. The weather looks like it's gonna cooperate. Kinda worried about the river and the, and the weather. It looks like they've taken most of the rain chances out for tomorrow evening. This is a free event. We got the Two Banks in town, the, the main sponsors for this. Thank you. Are you gonna be there? Okay. Country not your thing?
He doesn't like Matt Snook.
We'll bring him down. Really looking forward to it. Inaugural event here. So, yeah, gates open at 6:30. Food vendors will be there. We've got confirmation from six different food vendors.
Wow.
So, yeah, we'll see if they'll show up. That's good.
I'm hungry and, yes, bring a chair.
Can't wait.
Can I ask a couple of questions about that?
Yes.
Since we're on the subject, instead of waiting until my turn, the alcohol policy, is there still no alcohol allowed? Or are we allowing alcohol? And if so, did we already pass anything that said it's okay to have alcohol?
We did not.
Do we need to do that legally? I mean, 'cause it's a city park and there's no alcohol allowed. But it was our intent that we wanted to allow alcohol.
I thought it was, but we weren't gonna publicize it.
We weren't gonna advertise it. No, that's a good point.
But I mean, the law is the law, right? I mean, I don't wanna bring my beer down and get thrown in the hammer. Because I didn't pass a ordinance or resolution or whatever we need to do.
Just, um, in the city code, it indicates that the parks can be places where alcohol's consumed, but it does require a vote from the council, so.
So can I make a motion? We allow alcohol to be consumed at, or brought in or, and consumed at the Summer Concert Sunset Series?
At River Fest Park.
Or 2019 at River Fest Park?
This motion is gonna be for all the concert series?
I just said for 2019, Summer Concert Series.
Of the series, yeah.
Nope. Just for the series, concert series. Concert isn't going on, you don't get to do it. Are you meaning like 7:10 or?
6:30 to 9:45.
Great. Whatever you would like, Mayor. I'll amend it to read the time, 6:30. 10:09, 45.
Or can it go till midnight? Or, I mean, presuming that people may not, or till 10, or you know, 10 or 11 or something, presuming that.
The concert ends at nine. So it's seven, these are seven to nine, so.
Seven to nine.
So I, I, well, I don't.
We don't want people there all night, but.
Yeah. I think you're thinking you could linger and enjoy the park for a bit more.
It'll get dark, they need to leave, it's gonna be.
10 o'clock.
It'll be fine.
Get home in the second.
All right.
So leaving at 6:30 to 9:45?
That's fine.
9:45.
We'll be flexible for the last 15 minutes.
Maybe he's a blowing air horn.
Right. The air horn will sound. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions about what was just motion proposed?
Patrick, is that a sufficient motion to meet the?
Four nights. That was it.
To meet the requirements of the code.
Okay, thank you.
So I had a motion by Murdock to allow alcohol to be consumed at 2019 Concert Series from 6:30 to 9:45 at River Fest Park. Second by Honna Michael.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Honna Michael.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Is this a planning item that I would vote on? Zoning item?
No.
Okay.
He wants to. He wants to. Okay, so my second.
All right, continue.
My second suggestion, just because it kinda has to do with the park also, I was wondering if it might be considerate of DeSoto, if possible, to maybe put some kind of containers down there for collecting of cash funds that we could donate to Linwood?
So we had that conversation this week. What, what did you find out?
I'm still trying to contact, get ahold of the right person. What we decided to do was contact somebody over with Leavenworth County Emergency Management to see who would be the appropriate person to invite to come down and, and be, you know, announce that donations are accepted, maybe have, have a table there set up with that person that could accept those.
The idea is if they were there, then they could directly collect the donations.
They could collect it, and we don't have to deal with the cash and, yeah. So I'm, I'm still trying to make the appropriate contact on that.
As I, you know, the, the idea I would have if we did it ourself would be to turn around and turn that into gift cards or something, so that it would be a little bit, you know, and find, I mean, you know, I have a list of people who I know who are directly affected by it. And so, you know, it's, I don't think it would be hard to give that money. I guess fair is fair as far as how it's divided up, maybe, issue with, because it's a city doing it. But, you know, we, I, you know, there's a lot of people that are, have lost everything and, you know, giving them a donation.
I, I think our idea was to take, you know, to collect the monetary, if we are involved at all, collect the monetary donations and then figure out the most appropriate entity.
Sure.
On the ground, you know, in Leavenworth County that could distribute to fill the, the most need.
That's fine.
We'll work on that tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I had.
All right.
For the concert series.
But you reserve the right to make comments later.
I do, in case something comes up. 'Cause you never know.
City attorney, oh, sorry, were you doing, city attorney?
Nothing for me.
All right. City planner, Brad, what do you got? Bob, any report from the fire district?
Well, we've been doing a lot of fire rescue training. We made it to us down on Mount Fifth and Cedar Creek. We had people come from Fraspen, Colorado, and to work with us all those. Guys leave Sunday morning. Good everybody, four days of training down in Orange, Texas on the new mayor vote. A lot going on.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Council and Mayor comments. Start this end.
No report.
All right, Lori?
Well, my first item was tornado preparedness. But since everybody else thought the same idea, I didn't make any comments on that. But I think I kinda remember when we had trouble figuring out who would be here, since most people would, would be wanting to take cover. But the fact that we have the sheriff's office in here, hopefully it would be something we can work out. But going back to a thought on that, where in the basement do they go typically?
We just went, just to the hallway straight down.
Because if you think about it, if it's the, I don't know what's in the other end where the locker rooms were, but there's security gates going into the rest of the building.
Right.
When the building is closed. So if that was the access point opening, that would be one idea is, is that there's already security gates because of the fitness center that would keep people from going through the rest of the building. They'd only be able to go directly downstairs. But I haven't been in there, so I don't know what kind of shape it's in.
I don't know that those were, I mean, when we were here in school, that was not the safe space. We had to come right to the middle of the building, underneath everything, and.
So you went down that next level, though, right?
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did.
Yeah, it's not, that's not really set up for public consumption right now. The stairs are, I wouldn't want people on those stairs.
Yeah. No, that's why, despite you were, it's pretty, I mean, you're below.
Was it handicap accessible?
It is handicap accessible.
And that's important, too, so.
There's a lot of details that we need to think through on that.
Definitely.
And that concrete's fortified, you got fortified concrete on both sides. And on the ends, too, 'cause those stairwells are fortified.
Okay.
Is there a generator in the building then? Like if there was a storm and power is out for a long time, we don't have that kind of power to, okay. That was another question, too, for people that.
The, the emergency lights are battery, you know what I mean? Like the exit lights have battery, battery powered lights that come on when the power goes off. So I mean, there's, it's not completely dark unless you were down underneath everything, I suppose.
Yeah.
Well, backup power for this building, if, if Kevin Ritter was here, he would say that's pretty important. We need to be thinking about doing that.
We do, I mean, in a major storm event.
So if there was a major, you know, wipeout, and people are, you know, maybe just having knowledge of what buildings, well, if they're still standing, would have power. Like I'm guessing, I think the grocery store has a backup generator. I mean, some places have a backup generator, and maybe that would be a possibility of at least, you know, if they're public places, places where people could go. I'm thinking of people that are like on oxygen or, you know, on life that need to have power. And not that, I know it's not necessarily our responsibility, but it is. And to at least have a direction of where people would go, I think, is what's kind of important.
I think really important elements of the emergency management plan that Steve Chick's been working through, and, and I'm not exactly sure.
And he may have that already.
So maybe we could schedule Steve to update us on the, it would be timely after, you know, the recent storm.
That'd be a good idea.
On where we are with our emergency management plan.
Yeah. Maybe we can make that happen.
In one of these upcoming meetings.
With that, I'll pass on to Rob.
All right. Anything tonight, Rob?
I mean, just continuing that tad is follow-up on if it hadn't veered north, what would be our follow-up actions, emergency plan that would be in place? I know there's a lot of cities that don't have a public storm shelter area. The week before this hit, I was in Oklahoma City during the sixth anniversary of the Moore, Oklahoma, which I was down there for the Moore, Oklahoma, and, and the Oklahoma City Underground and extended my stay and did relief efforts. So in that emergency plan, having how to handle outside relief efforts. 'Cause I know when I volunteered down there going through Red Cross and one of the large churches in the FEMA, they were all stationed in the same place. But Oklahoma City does not have any public shelters. So I think being able to provide that is a key and a value to the community as well. 'Cause I was in a hotel and all schools got canceled on that Monday of the sixth anniversary 'cause they had a tornado outbreak. So I got there just in time for their tornado warnings and came back here for ours. But went to the hotel and basically said, is there a plan? And their answer was the first floor hallway. So knowing and publicizing where the public shelter would be in the event you need one is a good thing.
I might just comment, a lot of communities don't make their facilities available just for insurance reasons. It's probably the case that our insurance will not cover that situation. It's probably something I want to talk to them about. You know, because if you're in a situation where it's regularly open and everybody comes here and the designated person doesn't show up, then you're maybe in a worse, you know, situation than you were previously, so.
Lawyers.
They've got smartphones now that can open locks for you at a distance.
Yeah, that's just, there could be a technological solution there, it'd be pretty easy, yeah. Good point, Daryl, thank you. Okay, anything else, Rob? Danny, anything tonight?
Yeah. When I, when we, this was, I talked to Kevin about this a long time ago. We got an ideal situation on the emergency power for this building of, you know, down there in the old shop area, 'cause our electric go there, where it's. in the old shop area, 'cause our electric goes there, where it's, you could easily set up an indoor or outdoor facility for backup emergency generator down there on that corner, so, and you've got plenty of room for your automatic transfer switches, so it's an ideal situation here for this whole building. So I know we did that when we were studying how many KW we would actually need to run this building. And then I know that when I worked with the Olathe deal, we even had a deal set up, McDonald's actually brought in an emergency generator there, where they would actually come in and supply the Olathe district that time with 100 Happy Meals for the tornado victims if they had to open up the city for a shelter at that time. So, you know, there's a lot of planning still to be done, and I know that, and emergency communications, too, for, we could set that up through high-speed data transfer, and we don't even have to use the internet. So that can be done without any electricity or anything, and that can be done to any hospital if we wanted to do that, too, and that could be set up for real, for nothing.
Okay.
But that's all I had. Oh, except for the mowing situation, and I already talked to the administrator about that, and along there, it's getting a little high down Cedar Creek, but we've had some setbacks when we say weather.
Yeah.
Plan ketchup.
Plan ketchup. So that's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Danny. I have two small items. The first one is, in this legislative session, they passed Senate Bill 105, which allows cities to set the date when newly elected officials take office to be, can be as soon as December 1st, following certification of the election. It takes an action by us to adopt that. I would think maybe we would want to do that, so that someone is not sitting, you know, until that January, so that you can take office a whole lot sooner after the election rather than that delay. So I guess with everybody's non-consensus, Patrick, could you bring us something to make that happen?
Thank you.
The other thing is, I've had a request for...
Probably could've just talked to you about it.
Flag holders on Main Street, and something, you know, we can get them along, Memorial Day was, when it was obvious, on Main Street, all the concrete, you can't drive the wooden posts into the ground, obviously, but they sell little things we can attach to poles or something that we could make that happen.
Just for the downtown?
I think for the downtown blocks, yeah.
Okay.
Do they use the same brackets that they put the snowflakes on during the Christmas time?